So we could call the meeting to order. And I don't know, I thought it might be appropriate if we observe the moment of silence this evening in memory of Mr. Merrick from Sunderland, who passed away on Saturday night. So if we could, just thank you. Thank you very much. Can't have been an easy week in the district meeting.
No, it's been a challenge. But people have been terrific and very supportive, so I'm very grateful for that. All the schools and all the community members.
And thank you, Mary, for reaching out to people on the committee when I was out of town and didn't get the message until late at night.
I figured that, that's why I went and called Mary Max.
Item two, yes. So we have the minutes of September 4th.
To approve the minutes of September 4th, 2013.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion, any notations, corrections? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Try to get her printing two-sided. That?
Patty is in Chicago, so I am presenting your financial statements. It's really from the 1st to the 30th, so there is nothing which is good in 30 days. Nothing really to note. There are no variances. Perhaps later in the winter, there'll be some more explanation, but it's pretty straightforward. I have passed out the warrants to be signed.
I see the warrants there. We have space for public comments? Is there any public comment this evening?
Well, I had asked, Karen Ferrantino needs to get some signatures. And we thought this was the most expedient way to do it, rather than a full presentation. So Karen is our public unless anyone else is here.
Chump.
Okay.
And I am here to present to the school committee and the superintendent and the school chair. As every number of years, as part of the special education program plan, the superintendent, the special ed administrator, and the school committee chair just need to sign off on assurances that we are reading the regulations of the Individual Disability Education Act. There are 20 requirements to it. They are all listed here. I won't go through all of them tonight, but I will go through some just to give you an idea of what it is that I'm asking the school committee chair to sign off on. Mostly it's the use of funds. As many of you know, special education receives federal funding, some federal funding, through the Individual Disability Education Act to help supplement the spending in special education. And specifically, what we are guaranteeing is that those funds are used to help supplement students with special needs and not for other purposes. And that we, within the district, offer a continuum of services that allow students to access the general educational environment. Many of the things that you could imagine are having us assure that there's confidentiality, that the public is made aware of the special education program plan, and that it's always available to them, anybody who's interested in what the 20 requirements are. The program plan is always available at the central offices for the couple or two local. Unless you have specific questions, what I would do is leave it with the school committee and leave it with the school committee chair to review. And there's a section for a sign off on each of the 20 assurances, and then on the back page, or to initial each of the 20 assurances, and then on the back page it asks for a signature. Anybody have any questions regarding the program plan and how it pertains to special education? This used to be done as part of the CPR process, so every six years, the Program Quality Assurance of the Department of Education does come through and review all our files and review all our policies to check to make sure we are implementing this properly. It no longer follows the six-year cycle of the CPR. Ours is next year. This is now this year, a little off guard, sent to us on the 9th of September for signature. So we are now part of a cohort three, where any of the federal requirements are done by cohort, they just cycle through. And this is our year to ensure that we get our program done, so.
They are trying to streamline the procedures, so I will give them kudos in that, so.
I was going to ask how it correlates with, you said the CPR? I couldn't remember what the report was, but I know it was semi-regular. It occurs, and it's a full accounting of 20 or 30 questions, I think, that they audit at the state level.
And then they break these down into many indicators, and then they will come into the district and go over everything and give us feedback to ensure that we're fully implementing everything. And sometimes they'll come back with that you're partially implementing something and just ask for something to be updated. And that will happen throughout the year. Next year, we will have, the Department of Education will come in with their Program Quality Assurance and go through everything we have and work collaboratively with us to ensure that this is.
And if my recollection serves me correctly, I think there were two?
There were two indicators which we found partially implemented.
Partial.
Last time around. Which they asked us to go back or just to update what we're doing to make sure.
And yeah, so they were procedural, not actions. It was, I mean, they were documentation errors or something that needed correction.
Absolutely. It's always documentation because that's what they go through. No matter how wonderfully we service students or our program plan, we're not actually looking at the direct service to students. We're ensuring that you have that documentation and policies that we're.
I just wanted to give that response so that people here have a sense as I get to review this lovely document.
It is all documentation to ensure that we have these. I'm happy to say in my position, as I'm signing off on this as well, that I can speak to it. And if you read over them, that this district not only has the documentation to ensure that we follow the requirements of the program plan, but go beyond the documentation and do have a full continuum of services to meet students' needs. And one of the requirements is a free and appropriate public education, but we see students with special needs excel at times within this district and not just receive a free and appropriate public education, but actually reach their full attention. Can I copy this?
I'm more than happy to take it.
We thought this would save all the chairs a trip into central office to come sign, so. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. This is, as a footnote to that, I'd ask, does the, what would the committee, how would the committee like me to proceed with this? Just trust my judgment as I initial and sign, or would you want a summary from me?
I think we can.
A one-time trust.
One-time, one-time trust. We get to find out within a year if we were correct in signing it, so. I do have, the reason I raised those questions is because I think it was two years ago we just did it, two, maybe three. Not the program plan, the audit by the state.
The full audit was five years ago.
Five years ago, that long. That's how good my memory is.
My first year.
Oh, okay.
I remember that.
I know it was.
It was my first year here, so at the end of this year, this should be my sixth year, and so we will be ready for that cycle again next year. What you're remembering most likely is they also come back and do a mid-cycle review to just help the district to ensure that we're ready for this post.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks. No other public comment, we'll move on to unfinished business and discussion items. Roof replacement update?
Yeah, I just pass these around. These are from an email from myself, well, from Bob Lesko to me. Because I posed the question to him after the last meeting. He had questions about the roof and the condition and what the plan was. So we have verified that there is $150,000 that has been set aside to replace the roof when necessary. And they have, Bob has already gone around and met with people, and he's pointed out the deficiencies in the exterior envelope related to the lack of insulation in the roof. And I know that the leaks that had occurred, I believe, Clay, they were reported at the last meeting.
Yes.
He was aware of, and Bob basically assured me that he is on top of this and has a plan to proceed and the monies to do that, so. Okay.
Anyone have any questions or thoughts? I appreciate following through, Marty, and getting this feedback from Bob, and look forward to what we can find out.
Yeah, yeah. So I think he'll have more reports as Tom goes on.
Does this imply that the total amount is sort of put in reserve, or is it going to keep going? Do we know what it's going to cost?
We don't know exactly what it's going to cost.
Substantially more than's been set aside.
Substantially more has been set aside.
Probably three or four times that.
Oh.
It's not a small roofing area that we have, number one. And number two, there's also a need, as he notes in there, that there are some insulation and building envelope issues that it would be nice to try and correct at the same time. So it will be very interesting to see what they come up with. I believe when they had the energy audits done in Honeywell, was it, that proposed various improvements to buildings in town, they noted a lot of insulating deficiencies in this building, that they said if you can find a way to fund it when you're doing the roof, it would make sense to do it and will save you a lot of money down the road in the heating and air conditioning of the building, so.
The other piece, just so that you're aware, we start the budget process in this month very early on, but Bob will be going through each building and kind of prioritizing building projects that we see and trying to come up with timelines as to when they need to happen.
Do I remember that in talking about the roof and the eventual repair that we also talked about solar, that once we get the roof done, that there's a huge expanse with solar potential? Okay, I just wanted to.
We did float that balloon, and I think we can continue to talk along those lines. I know that the town is looking at the old landfill area to put a farm out there, but it does, I mean, to me, there's a lot of, a lot of space on top of this roof, and it's all pointing in, a lot of it's pointing in the right direction to give consideration to see what might be done. Yes, you do recall correctly.
Okay.
So before we're done with that, then we'll move on to policies. BEDB1?
Yeah, these are all the policies I presented last month. And you know, the procedure is you present them one month, discuss them, and then vote the next. So I didn't know if there was any further discussions on the policies that you received.
If you'd like, we can go through them one at a time, or we start with BEDB1, which is Agenda Preparation and Dissemination? And maybe, Marty, if we could, we could treat these each as a delete and add motion? Or do we go through and delete first and then add?
You, no, you can go through and do it all in one fell swoop. So in other words, you can go through and find out if there's any questions, and then you can make a motion to accept the new policy.
So we have BEDB1. The Agenda Preparation. I would say BEDB1, BEDB3, which deal with the agendas, the formats, and the preparation and dissemination would be logically taken as one motion.
You want to move to approve those two? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Or two, well, we have to delete those two.
You want to rescind?
Yeah.
That's what I was saying, that's what I was asking. You just want to do it all as one motion, Marty?
Well, there are, no, there are three, there are three new policies to vote and approve. And if you look under Votes Required, you can vote, first vote, to delete those policies in one group.
Right.
And then you can vote to accept the new and revised condensed policies in one group.
All right.
Unless you want to do them policy by po.
No.
Okay.
I don't have a problem doing them all at once, but I wanted to make sure we would delete first and then pass the new one.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Delete and then vote to accept.
I would entertain a motion to delete policy BEDB1, BEDB3, BEC1, BEC2, and BEC3.
Summing.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Carries unanimously. Now I would entertain a motion to approve new policies, BEDB1.
No, BEC.
I mean, BEC, I'm sorry, BEC, BEC1. Here we go. And we're rolling right along here.
BEC2.
BEC2.
Right.
Couldn't make them all the same.
No, because we've reduced the number.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. And then we have a policy BH2, which is the.
That's the use of electronic messaging.
Yes, electronic messaging. And I would entertain a motion.
To accept the amendment of policy BH2. Did Jamie second that?
No.
David did.
David did. Have it ask any comments or questions. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, nothing. And as long as we're on the business side of things, I believe we had a, just wanted to see if it's here. Amendment of policy, okay. It was not on here. We had a revision to anti-bullying sent to us today?
Yep.
It's under New Business.
It's under New Business.
Discussion item is B.
Okay. Would you, since we're on a roll with policies?
I was going to suggest that because, Clay, we're going to adjourn this meeting into the computer lab for the MCAS presentation. So I thought it might make sense to do the policy and the executive session minutes here before we go over and see that presentation.
Sure. That makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, I believe the anti-bullying policy changes are the ones that have been provided by the state.
Correct.
And it adds language. Basically, it broadens the scope and definition of who is covered under anti-bullying, which is what the blue is in the policy. I just had to do this at my school, so I didn't see anything dramatically different.
Right. This basically is the law, so we don't really have a lot of leeway in it.
It's the language provided by the state in the new law, or in the updating of the law.
And it basically includes adults in there, and they.
Bullying students.
Right.
Adults bullying students, and anyone that's working as an adult within the school is bullying students.
Does the inclusion of adult necessitate the change from aggressor to perpetrator? That's just a change in nouns, and I don't, it's interesting. I mean, everything else makes a lot sense, and then they want, they had started with this aggressor word, and now they're using perpetrator.
Right, right. Again, that was nothing that we had control over.
That may be a more neutral, a neutral term, I don't know. Or maybe it's more of an aggressive term.
It's more of a law enforcement term.
Yeah, definitely. It connotes criminality.
The way I'm reading is this also protects staff?
Yes.
Correct.
And staff on staff. Yes, yeah.
It, yeah, it broadens the scope, so it's, so. And we'll take this up at the next meeting, or do you want to just?
Well, you know.
If we follow the normal procedure, we would delay it one more month, but.
I don't see a purpose in doing it because it is the law.
Right. And all that's been done here is to add the language stipulated by the law. And all schools in the Commonwealth are required to do this.
So we're really voting to accept.
Correct.
We're not even really voting to approve.
So I'll make that motion to accept policy JICD.
Do we have any further discussion?
Is the D supposed to be in the middle of the page?
Is the what? Oh, no. I think, no, the D is supposed to be up in the upper right corner. I printed it out at work and I left it on my desk.
It's there, okay, it might be me.
Yeah, because it is. JICD is in the upper right-hand corner.
Yes, it's me.
Then it says iPad. That's good, that's cool.
I just wanted to check.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Did we have a second on that? Mary made the motion. Okay, burn it in. Thanks.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Posted extensions? And I believe part of the language in the new law requires that it be on the school's website.
Yep.
Is it prominently displayed or easy to find?
We had to wait till it was approved tonight, and then we can put it there.
Okay.
And we, yeah, it needs to be front and center, easy to find, so. And you know, we are in the process of getting a contractor to improve our website and do a whole major redesign and overhaul, so there'll be a lot of stuff that has to go on the website, the content.
As I wrestled with this and with our administrative team, the suggestion was made, I guess I made the suggestion, the rest concurred, that instead of just having a tab that says anti-bullying or something along those lines, we put it under policies, important policies. And we have anti-bullying, we have the mission statement, we have various doctrines and things within the culture of the school included with it, so it's not just this bang, you get hit with anti-bullying and anti-hazing and all the fun stuff.
Yeah, right now at our website, only really important or pertinent policies, or listen, we don't have every policy in the policy manual.
Absolutely.
It's the anti-harassment, the anti-bullying, the acceptable use, internet acceptable use policy. And there's going to be more of that coming down because next year we have to revise all of our suspension and expulsion rules.
If there's some good ones, we can put in there too, though. That was mine. It's always fun, no, I know. Anyways.
Positive.
Yeah, something a little more positive, Ben. Just a thought.
And I noticed that it also says you have to distribute to staff. So do you do that via email, or does staff get a, actually a hard copy?
Janine and I haven't talked about how we're going to do it, but we had to wait until it was approved, because then it's policy, and then we somehow are going to get it to staff. I imagine it's going to be done at a faculty meeting.
Do you have a, we have a policy manual that has it in it? Do you?
We do.
And every staff member gets that.
You mean an employee handbook? They don't get the policy manual.
An employee handbook.
We have the existing anti-bullying in the parent and student handbook, and in the employee handbook, we have the employee-related harassment policies. Now, this has to be in the employee handbook because it pertains to employees, so that's the difference. So we'll be sending that out, but I think we need to discuss it with the staff at a faculty meeting.
Absolutely. If that's how you encompass it, you put it in the handbooks? Executive Session Minutes.
We try in October to bring forward any executive session minutes from the previous year to release them, because prior to that, they're executive session minutes, so they're not open to the public. This has not always happened, so this will be a practice in the future to look at October as the release of executive session minute month. You only have one from June 12th.
And we had some last month that we either. In the packet.
You did.
That we approved.
You did.
We have executive session minutes from Wednesday, June 12th. And this was collective bargaining relative to the negotiations, ongoing negotiations on the teachers contract.
To approve the executive session minutes with June 12th.
Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Technically, practically, I should say, what does that mean? Are they going to be posted somewhere for the public to see?
No, they're actually kept in a folder in the superintendent's office.
They become part of the public record?
They do.
That's what I mean, so somewhere there's some public record that.
There is.
For whatever reason.
Right.
And we're going to MCAS results.
I'm going down to the computer lab.
Do you need a minute to set up?
No, we're all set.
Okay.
He might need a minute to set up. So I'll go down there and I'll pass out your packets that go along with the presentation.
Okay.
You have each slide is on your handout, and I, there's no fancy animations or sound effects in this slideshow, it's a lot of information.
effects in this slideshow. It's a lot of information I'm just going to share with you. And I hope, I hope I have time at the end to answer any questions you might have, and I promised that I would not, you know, drill down and make this lengthy, so, but please, if you have any questions at any time. So I'd like to start, and so, no, Janine and I have a big picture of things, and the first thing is, what is our Deerfield Accountability Designation according to Mass DESE? We're a Level 2 school, okay? The majority of the schools in the state are Level 2 schools. What does that mean? It means that we're not meeting our net gap narrowing goals, okay? The Level 2 designation is for schools that the cumulative progress and performance index CPI for all its students and to our high-need students, and I'm going to get into that a little bit later, is 74 or lower. So there's Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, Level 4, Level 5. You don't want to be a Level 3, 4, or 5 school. At Level 5, that's when the state, the school's in receivership, and the state runs it, doesn't even, the school already is even cut out of running the school. We're at Level 2. And what is Progressive Performance Index and Cumulative Progressive Performance Index? Combines information from the MCAS scores about narrowing proficiency gaps, growths, that's student growth, and graduation dropout rates. Now, obviously, we don't have graduation dropout rates factored into our formula, but it's over multiple years, and it goes, it's a formula that goes into a single number. All districts, schools, and student subgroups receive an annual Progressive Performance Index based on improvement over a two-year period, and a cumulative PPI between 0 and 100 based on four years of data. So for a group to be considered to be making progress towards narrowing its proficiency gaps, its cumulative PPI or CPI must be 75 or higher. What is Deerfield's? Okay, and this is using 2013 MCAS data, integrating the calculation. Just so you know, for the four years that they used to come up with the cumulative performance index, the most recent year is weighted first, so it goes first, second, third, fourth, okay? Right now, you'll see here, all students, high needs, which is Title 1, low income, free and reduced lunch, and then students with disabilities. This is where, what we're talking about here, and this is in your handout too, but the print's a lot smaller. Our cumulative CPI in all students that were tested in English Language Arts, grades 3 through 6, is 87.4. That's a negative 1% from the previous year. Our target was 92.2 for all students, but where we're having the most difficulty meeting our performance gaps is high-need students, low income specifically, and students with disabilities. You can see the gap is much larger there. And then over here is our six-year goal, and they calculate that by looking at four years of data and then projecting, okay, at this present trend, what would be your target goal for the performance index? So it looks pretty bad, but for all students, it's not where we want to be at all, because our 2012 was 88.4. Whoops, went to the next slide. I'll go back to that. We're still almost five points off our target, so we're not happy about that. But this is the area that we really need to look a little harder, is in our high needs and low income, because our PPI for high needs is lower than 74. That's why we're a Level 2 school. We didn't meet our target up here, but it's over 75. It's in these two areas that were below 75, and that's unacceptable to Janine and I.
And what's the sample size and the number of students there?
And, I didn't leave it on this chart, but that's all, so that would be all the students in our school that tested last year for 2013 data. I could get that for you, Ken, but the, when this is reported at the Mass DESE website, there's a column over here which says "and," and that means the number of students tested. It's a, it's a pretty large sample, because we're a large enough school that it's significant. Now, these are not reported, because we have less than 10 students-
Right.
-in these categories. That help you? So that's English Language Arts. Here's Math and Math. We did a little bit better.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, please.
In the all students category, that does include the students that are high-
Yes, it's everybody. But you have to report in the subgroups where you have enough students to not violate confidentiality. If you only have three students in the Asian-American category, you know, they don't report that, okay? So that's English Language Arts, and then we're going to go to Math. We did a little bit better there.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, please.
About the target, is that a state target?
Yes, they formulate that target based on trends and data and how the PPI is calculated. And I didn't want to put all that information into this presentation.
I just meant when you said "our" target, it's not like the school got to get it, that this is what we want in the next year.
No, that's what the state says.
That should be our target, okay.
So, and here's Math. You'll see our gap change is a little, is a little bit, only went down three tenths of a percentage point, but we're still not where we need to be, and that's our six-year goal. Again, the biggest gap is in our high-need students and our lower-income students. We seem to have done a pretty good job. We raised it two tenths of a point. I mean, again, these, whoops, sorry. I should have set the timings on this power point. We're not happy about this. However, we, as administrators, we have to look at this big picture stuff, so we can then determine, okay, where can we do a better job of committing resources and assistance to our teachers, you know, because when I say this isn't acceptable to us, this is not a criticism of our teachers at all. This is just saying, Janine and I, we're not doing a good enough job of addressing this. That's plain and simple. Now, there is some good news in here. I'm going to share that in just a minute. Jane?
Two quick questions. Number one, if we were looking at a Venn diagram, would there be, so you've got these three subgroups that meet goals, but I imagine like in a lot of schools, a Venn diagram of those subgroups, you find a lot of people are in those categories.
Yes.
That's multiple recordings. It could be one student in all those categories, but it becomes a line item in each category that says we didn't meet the goal.
Right.
Because of the way the data's broken up. So in a way, it can look worse than it is, because it looks like you've got all these groups who aren't making progress, but it could be a small population who meet all those criteria-
Right.
-and are making progress.
Yeah, and we can get a performance index for a student. If they have three years of data in MCAS, we can get it. So we can go right down to the student level, but that's not here. And there's lots of different ways this data can be reported. This, and I'm going to show one of the reports that we think is useful to actually help teachers.
But then just, right, my second question.
I'm sorry, Janine.
There's, it's okay. As best as I can understand, in the next year or two, with the coming online of PARC and the Common Core stuff, this, this format of testing is going to go away.
Yes.
So-
They might recalculate how they, the index.
Maybe they'll change our indexes in our PARC handle.
And that, that's true. It might be coming down the pipe, but right now, this is the tool available to us to see how we're doing at the school. And again, I want to reiterate, when, when, when I say to Janine and I, this is not acceptable, again, that is not a criticism of our teachers or what they're teaching. This is at the administrative level. We have to find a way to make sure that we are giving our students and our teachers the best chance to succeed, and, and not teach to the test, but teach a good curriculum. Okay, so here's, what can we do? So, okay, we got this nice stuff from the state. What do we need to do? We need, and that's the leadership of the school. We need to look for trends, school-wide, and at grade level, classroomally, to determine the Massachusetts frameworks and Common Core standards that we need to do a better job teaching. The useful tool is the reports I'm going to share with you in just a minute, the School Test Item Analysis Graph that you get. Where it's available to us at the DESE Security Portal, Edman Analytics, which is the firm that takes all this data and turns it into reports. And when we sort that, this report by state score, item difficulty, the graph will show how well students at the school and district would, and Deerfield is its own district, and its own school and its district, performed across the difficulty spectrum for most difficult, least difficult items. So the following slides are the School Test Item Analysis Graph in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and 5th grade also has Science, Technology, and Engineering. So for example, the, the school is the blue, and I know it's kind of hard for you to see with the circles. The state is the triangles. So there's certain points on the graph, the most difficult test items are all the way over here, and that's determined by the state. You can see that we have achievements way above the state average on that area of the test. We have some that are below. So what we can do is, when we see that data point, we can go down here, we can actually look at the item, and not, we're not going to worry about what the item said, we're going to worry about what standard the item addressed. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But so you can see, in 3rd grade English Language Arts, we had, this is the first time these kids took this test, we had some kids achieving well above the state average. And we had, and we have a few areas that we can look at and say, okay, what can we do to help you teach to that standard, and make sure that we are addressing that standard in our curriculum? So then this is the 3rd grade in math, and forgive me, I'm not going to go slide by slide, but you can see again, here in 3rd grade math, now it's kind of a little different. The difficult items were right there, the state average, or above, or above, and then when you get to the middle, the medium difficult items, we're achieving below the state standard. Now, what that might indicate to us is, we spent a little too much time teaching to really complex and difficult standards, and we overlook something. Or it could tell us something else entirely, but we can see that our kids did well in some areas that we wouldn't expect them to do well, and then we saw them do not so good. So we can, again, look at the test items. So down here, this is the corresponding numbers. So when you see this report, whoops, I hit the smart board, so I went ahead to the next slide. See the smart board, that we can look at the items, see what standard it is, and try to adjust our teaching to make sure that we are spending enough time and commitment and resources to that standard in the core curriculum. So there's 4th grade. We, this is English Language Arts, so you can see, we did really well in a lot of areas in English Language Arts in the 4th grade. There's some areas, just a few data points that are below the state average, but most of them are above the state average. That's good news. That, that means we're doing something really, really effectively. And we believe that if we can just figure out by utilizing this data, how we can calibrate teaching, then we'll close that proficiency gap that was talked about in the previous slides. So this is 4th grade mathematics. Now, you can see this one, we have a little bit more of a challenge, because it's all over the place. Our kids did well, and then they, they went really below the state average. So here, we have a really difficult item, high achievement, and then down here, we have, whoops, once again, I learned not to touch that smart board. We have students that scored well below, and this is all 4th grade students that took this mathematics MCAS, well below the state average. And how we do against the state average goes into that performance index that's talked about. All right, here's 5th grade English Language Arts. We have our students scoring well above the state average in English Language Arts on many items. That's good. Only one area where they're below the state average. 5th grade mathematics, a little bit more variance. We have to really look at that. And I was talking to Meg Shulda, our Math Interventionist Coach, about what she thought of this data, and she's already started formulating plans, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more. And here's 5th grade Science, Technology, and Engineering. We scored well above the state average in most areas. Nice job, thanks.
Thanks. I'll share that.
And Kayla, you guys did great in English Language Arts last year. So, you know, you look at that performance index, and you say, wow, we're not, our gap is at six points, but when you look at what does that mean for designing instruction, you see that there's just a few areas that we can look at and target, you know, and really, I think if we just improve our teaching in those areas, and we're smart about how we go about that, and don't try to do everything, but just target the few areas that we identify, I call them power indicators, I think we'll be fine with closing the gap. I mean, data is just data. It's how we take the data and help our teachers do a better job, and enable them to do a better job. That's on us as administrators. Here's our 6th grade English Language Arts. A lot of variance, but they scored above the state average in a lot of areas, some way up, well below, but not that many. Now, this last slide is the 6th grade math, and I'm going to use this data point to talk about the final part of the presentation. You'll see this data point well down below the state average. It's for item 17. Okay, so we, and that's the most difficult. Remember, the most difficult items is the terms by the state are on the left. So, okay, we're going to start there as an example. What can we do about that? So how can we use this information? Identify the core curriculum strands that we did not score above the state average. In the previous slide, item 17, the standard for that was, and this is from the Mass Curriculum Frameworks, and this is the Common Core Standards. I'm just going to focus on the Common Core Standard. Find the area of right triangles, other triangles, special quadrilaterals and polygons by composing into rectangles or decomposing into triangles and other shapes. Apply these techniques in the context of solving real-world and mathematical problems. So that's a strand in the core curriculum we didn't do a good job of teaching last year, as indicated by our MCAS scores. Now, on a given day, a kid might have been able to solve a problem of that nature, but on the MCAS, they didn't. And that item was an open response item, so not only did they have to solve the problem, they had to explain their reasoning. That's what makes it a complex and difficult item on the test. So what can we do? Well, we can then make sure that we teach that standard in our 6th grade math curriculum, not only teach the appropriate operations and algorithms, but that our students also can write a clear explanation to their reasoning and solution, because this item was a short answer, an open response item. We can make sure our students are required to solve and explain similar problems throughout the school year, problems that address that standard. Okay. So what else is going to be done at Deerfield to improve teaching and learning? In English Language Arts, we're implementing the Culkins Teachers College Writing Project Units of Study and Opinion Information and Narrative Writing Series in grades K through 5. Our 6th grade utilizes writer's workshop model that incorporates the concepts from the 5th grade units of study, and the publisher's developing a 6th grade version of that, and we're going to purchase it when it's published. We have literacy coach Kristen Robinson. She supports teachers' implementations of the Culkins Writing Project Units of Study. She, Kristen assists grade-level teachers with unit planning, demonstration lessons, debriefing conferences after demonstration lessons, modeling student conferences, which is a big component of the units of study. So the teacher has to conference with a student about their writing, and analyzing classroom assessment data with teachers to modify and calibrate instruction. Kristen also provides interventions to some students who require that support. The mathematics interventionist slash coach slash specialist Meg Shulda collaborates with teachers to plan and implement math units and co-teach for grades 4 through 6. Meg also does parallel teaching with the 6th grade, which is teaching a small group the same curriculum as a larger group, but she takes them out and works specifically with those, that smaller group, but it's the same thing that the kids are doing in the whole class. Meg works, assists the 5th grade with the new math curriculum implementation, and Meg works for the 4th grade on a math workshop model, and Meg provides assistance to the 3rd grade for developing scope and sequence for their curriculum. And finally, Meg provides interventions for 5th grade students who require that support. What else? School and district administrators usually, utilizing the new teacher evaluation system, provide precise, consistent feedback to teachers facing observation, double improve instruction. We are going to create and integrate grade-level SMART team goals and school improvement plan goals that focus on student achievement. SMART goals are part of the new teacher evaluation system, and they're, that's an acronym for specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and timely. And those are created by the teachers. Now, they're told that they have to do it because of the state, you know, we have the new teacher evaluation, but they do determine those goals, the team goals, and then their individual goals. All of our grade-level teams have chosen to do the team goal on student achievement, and it's aligned with what we're trying to do here. Target professional development opportunities for district curriculum initiatives, ongoing support for teachers and staff as they work to improve their teaching, such as professional learning committees, mentoring, release time to observe other teachers in the building, and of course, staff development in the form of workshops, conferences, and seminars. District grade, grade-level teams meet with elementary curriculum coordinator, who's lost six times this year to write- to write, to score writing samples pre and post for each unit in that Culkins Units of Study. And to improve and inform instructions so to develop, they're going to score papers together. So there's a common rate of reliability about grading student papers within the rubrics that are provided in the units of study. Ongoing data analysis from MCAS and other data sources to provide teachers specific to their classroom. And for example, tomorrow, the responsive intervention committee is meeting to go over classroom assessment data and determine grouping of children that need interventions and additional academic support. Thank you. Any questions? Is that fast enough Marty?
That is, that is, let me just.
Any comments from the teachers that are here? Did I totally misrepresent what's going on here?
No, I, I think when we're talking about math, because it's so skill specific.
Yes.
The frameworks have changed and the expectations of curriculum has, have shifted from different grade levels over the past two years.
Yes.
So our curriculum doesn't necessarily match. We're in the process of, of matching it up.
Yeah, that's why Meg is doing, I'm sorry, Meg is doing scope and sequence for the third grade. Is that an explanation of how to align our curriculum, what to teach to the Common Core standard? But Denise is right. Some of the MCAS data that went into that CPI, the four year, was for the 2003 standards. And then in 2011, we suddenly switched to the 2011 frameworks, which are aligned with the Common Core. That's not offered as an excuse, but it's a reality. We do have to make sure we're teaching to the newer standards, and that takes a little bit of time. It can be done, it just takes time. Kayla, do you want to add anything?
I mean, the only thing that I was really thinking about is sometimes the smaller standards, at least in fourth grade, you know, we take the MCAS exam in the beginning of May in fourth grade. And you know, some of the littler standards, we don't get to till the end of May. So if they just so happen to be on the MCAS that year, then, you know.
And that might explain why on some of the less, the least difficult items, some, there's some variance.
Exactly, right, just when we didn't happen to get to that exact question.
And if we focused on deep reading of informational text and writing about it, kids might not do as well on something that's, you know, relatively simple. Any other questions, comments from the committee? I'm happy if you, you know, want to look at this more. I'm happy to answer any other questions at the next school committee meeting. And this is ongoing. We don't just do this and, you know, put it aside and go back to our business. This is something that I know Janine is committed to. There's a tremendous amount of resources in our budget committed to making this happen. And we take it seriously. And again, I want to reiterate, when we say stuff is not acceptable, that's not a reflection of our teachers here because they're awesome.
Can I just ask a question, maybe just more to you Marty? I know the other schools are smaller and their sample size, in our district, sample sizes are smaller and all that. But just curious, are, is everybody level two? Do we have any level ones?
No, we do. All of our schools are at level two, except for Sunderland, which is at level one.
Okay. And is that a change from other, other years? Has it been a different school that's that way? Or is that a trend?
Everyone was level two last year, except for Sunderland, which was also level one. So they've been at level one for two years in a row.
Why do I have memories of hearing that Conway scores were always really high?
Years ago.
Years ago, okay.
They were.
Isn't, isn't part of this is, it's, it's an improvement index that's based on where you sit or sat over the three years. And the starting point may be at a high level of achievement, but you're required to improve.
Yes.
That's the standard. So that's where it gets a little fuzzy.
It does get confusing because you'll notice that a lot of our scores are on a proficient level.
Right.
But if they've always been at the proficient level.
You're not improving.
You're not improving.
Right, and student growth, which is high achievement, there's improvement.
Right.
This goes into that formula.
And so it, it becomes misleading for a school that tends the trend to the proficient side.
Yes, and that's what I want to point out. There's, that index looks like, oh my god. But real, in reality, what the gap means is we just have to, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We don't have to throw out the baby with the bathwater, whatever cliche you want to use. We just have to make sure that we address certain areas that the data tells us we need to improve. And I, I'm confident that we'll have a much better report next year. You know, it's, 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 the, the data can scare people. But then when you really understand it and understand what it means for instruction, that's why I shared that, that report. That makes it easier to just go about addressing it.
And you may remember years ago, I could see Louise's presentations. She had said, and I'm talking to, maybe 2005, our school scores were always terrific. And she said, at the time, state had said by 2014, everybody had to be proficient. And she said, that is going to get more and more difficult. Because we've already started up here, which means we have to keep. And so that's why in 2012, you saw, school districts were given the option of opting out of this. And so now you're starting to see all these changes, with the MCAS being changed. Because frankly, they said by 2014, I think some ridiculous percentage, like ninety percent of schools would be considered non-proficient in the state.
That was under No Child Left Behind.
Right.
What do you mean by opting out?
Um, opting out, it was at the, uh.
Well, there's race to the top.
Race to the top, yeah.
Participate, but then you don't get funds that were available to districts anyway. And you know, another thing is, the MCAS data collection system and how the, the performance index is designed. And Jamie pointed out that under the new testing that's going to come down, eventually that will change, it's designed to give information to really bad districts on how they can improve. You understand, you know, so it, it, it starts from the hypothesis that this, this school district really is not doing a good job. So therefore, they need to have these kind of indicators to let them know so then they can be smart about attacking them. It's not, it's not collected and disseminated to have a good district go to a super district. Does that make sense? So that's why, again, there's some data that really isn't relevant in changing teaching. And, thought I'd turn this off. So what, that's what we have to focus on. Bye bye. Is, what can this tell us to help us actually change what teachers can do with their students?
And that's why we don't want to be dismissive of the data. You know, we want to use this data to make improvements. But recognizing that the curriculum has changed dramatically. And so, and it doesn't happen overnight to realign the curriculum with the new standards. So I think district Y, our area of weakness has always been open response writing. And that's every school, K through twelve. And we are working on that very hard. And I think we'll see some improvements in that next year.
At statewide and nationwide. Open response items are the body of every state, almost every school district. But that's why we're doing the Culkins Units of Study, because it really is a great way. There's a research base that puts an effective way to help students write effectively informational text. The joke about the old curriculum, you know, you know, focused a lot on students writing about their feelings and their background, you know? One of the people that was in, the designers of the Common Core curriculum said, you know, imagine facing when you're an employer in the year 2020 and it says, you know, Barrett, I need that market analysis report, but first I'd like a three-page document, a compelling narrative of your childhood. It's not going to happen. You know, they want you to be able to analyze information and be able to give clear, concise summaries and, and analysis of it. And that's what we have to try to teach kids, because that's a skill that they're going to need.
And I also have to add, the bottom line is no child in this district has ever not graduated, has ever not received a diploma because they haven't passed MCAS. No child, no student in the district has ever dropped out of school because they failed MCAS. So, you know, I keep, keep that in mind as we, as we go through this. Having said that, I think there are some strong improvements that we can make, district Y.
When did the state institute the tenth grade MCAS? And having to pass that is part of the graduation.
Oh.
Two thousand and three?
Three, yeah.
And that was a response to No Child Left Behind. And that was passed in 2001. No Child Left Behind, the Elementary Secondary Education Act. And that's gone now. Which went bye-bye. I mean, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act is still around. It's, but they haven't reauthorized it, and the Obama administration's changed it. Didn't end around by doing the race to the top. And after states waivers from the requirements in No Child Left Behind, if they come up with their own accountability system, that's just as rigorous. I think Massachusetts did a pretty darn good job in making that accountability system. Pretty darn rigorous. But they, they got the race to the top money. So you have to balance that.
So we did the MCAS results. And we're down to committee reports. I would just take a minute on the committee chairman report basis. Just to mention that I had an email come from Jan Warner. She is.
Chair of Congress.
Chair of Congress, that's what I thought. And she wrote to me as chair of the joint committees, wondering if I thought we should do something as the Union Thirty-Eight group, or the Union Thirty-Eight group might want to do something to recognize Tim's passing. So I thought I would discuss that with this group and see before I responded to her. It was sent to me on Monday, but I didn't get to it till today. So I figured I'd just bring the question here and see what people think. What do we want to consider? I think we have a, we're trying to get a joint meeting together for the twenty ninth.
We are, that's, so that you can evaluate me. I have to present my goals and we're trying to get a quorum. We weren't successful on the twenty fourth, so now we're trying on the twenty ninth.
But would it, would it be specific in mind? Would I be supportive of that?
It, it almost seemed like she was saying, maybe we would appeal to the committees and see if people wanted to contribute to. And I believe Marty said there is a memorial fund established.
There is a fund that was established today at Greenfield Savings Bank. It's the Tim Merrick Memorial Fund and all proceeds. This is set up by Tim's family, his parents and siblings, to benefit the Sunderland Elementary School.
And if this committee is supportive of that type of notion, maybe what I can do is, chair of the Union Thirty-Eight Joint Committee would be to send out a note to all the school committee members and say, we're considering this. And leave it up to the individual committees to decide how they'd like to proceed. I mean, I, I think it's a wonderful idea to have the Union Thirty-Eight committees do it as a group. I'm sure Sunderland is looking to do, would be, will be looking to do something. But I'll have to figure out with Marty how to word it. But if this group is supportive of that idea, we'll, I'll move forward with that and respond to Jan.
Okay, and, and I told Ken that this is not something that has to be acted on immediately. This is a fund that will be ongoing for some time, so.
The collaborative, I didn't make any of the meetings over the summer. But the, the collaborative, I don't know. I have not done an update in several month, several meetings worth of collaborative meetings. The executive director of the collaborative is retiring, or has retired. And they are in, they've spent the summer putting together sort of specifications and a dream profile for the new executive director. They've gone to the search, and the search committee has begun to review applicants and work with the expectations that have been put together by the full board for the executive director position. So that process is moving forward. And at the same time, the rest of the business is proceeding as per usual. And principals report?
I have copies for everyone. With that, I'll also pass out the enrollment report, which is as of October first. And I threw this together today. I left off things that we'd already reported in previous reports. Like for example, the last school committee meeting, the fifth grade had not gone to nature's classroom, but they did in their back, so I left that off. I didn't feel it was necessary to say the fifth grade went to nature's classroom. We did talk about that in the previous school committee. So tomorrow, as I was talking about in the presentation, in academics, the RTI committee meets tomorrow to review data. That's classroom assessment data on students that we've been doing since the school began and to identify or group students for interventions. Curriculum night occurred on last week, Wednesday, September twenty. It was well attended, and teachers gave parents an overview of their curriculum for their grade level classroom for the year. I was able to go to do a drive-by for every classroom, and so was Janine. So I saw ninety-five percent of the teacher presentations, even though I was only seeing one, one or two minute slice of it. And I was impressed, as always, by our teachers' organization and preparation for it and their use of the technology to communicate that. And it was, it was a really, it's always a fun night. A lot of information gets put out there. Data review meetings with Louise Law, our elementary curriculum director, took place on nine twelve, two thousand and thirteen for grades three through six. So that was looking at the MCAS data. And we'll continue to do that throughout the year. Fifth and sixth grade attended district grade level meetings on nine twenty-four, two thousand and thirteen. So all the fifth grade teachers, all the sixth grade teachers for the Union Thirty-Eight elementary schools met with Louise. And I just gave you the MCAS report. School-based activities, the kindergarten is going to Pine Hill Orchards tomorrow. That's always a fun trip. And Pine Hill Orchards, if you've never been there, is in Colrain. And it's, it's a lovely place, and the kids always have a great time. Picture day is Tuesday, always exciting day. And the building staffing and professional. We had our lockdown and our bus evacuation drill on Monday, the sixteenth. It went well. And this year, we did even non-bus riders, walkers, bike riders, to do the bus evacuation drill. Because they go on field trips, and they need to know how to get off that bus. God forbid if something bad happened, so it went well. Our, our first faculty meeting since the one before the school started is tomorrow. Ben Barshevsky, our PE teacher, and Mike Ponte, our part-time school psychologist, are on temporary duty at Sunderland. And that started Tuesday. Teacher observations within the new evaluation system have begun. We're using the observation form that's at mylearningplan.com. We take our iPad into the classroom. It's a ten-minute observation. And now, some of those are on hold this week, obviously, we told the staff. Any observations we had planned for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday were probably not going to happen. But we're committed to continue those. And our school forum met for the first time this year today. And Janine wasn't there, so I met with, usually it's Janine and me. And school forum's a place for faculty. A grade level rep attends and brings up issues that, you know, may or may not be something that you might want to talk about at a faculty meeting. And we try to get resolution. And it's also used for teachers to ask, okay, so how can we do this better? What about, like, one of the things is what about maintenance requests? Can you, can you tell me about this maintenance request I sent? And sometimes there are things that we have to say. You know what, we need to talk more about this, we need to devote more time to it. So it's just a mechanism, one way that the faculty can, and the IAs and the staff can get concerns brought to the administration in a public way, and we can get them answers. So that's my report submitted on behalf of Janine.
How's that last thing different? Just curious, what about for a faculty meeting?
Well, a faculty meeting, we'd like to, to.
Be more structured than that with an agenda?
A faculty meeting, we'd like to spend, like last year, our faculty meeting is the bulk of them were on training on the new teacher evaluation system. The forum might be, could we switch, this was just brought up for discussion. Could we switch curriculum night to a Thursday instead of a Wednesday? we switch curriculum night to a Thursday instead of a Wednesday? That kind of thing. It's, so it's stuff that might have a quick answer. It's stuff that has just come up and maybe we need to identify that, okay, this is something we need to look at longer. And sometimes it's something as simple as the first grade asked today if they could get play rakes for the kids now the leaves are falling because the kids want to rake leaves on the playground. So we don't want to spend faculty meeting time talking about things like that. Yeah. Yeah. That's an excellent way to put it.
So, so it's not like a big meeting, it's just that if you have something you want to bring forward, you'd come and...
You give it to your grade level rep and then they bring it to the forum. And either we're able to answer it right there or we say we have to get back to you, but then we publish minutes to the faculty and get the information out. So I hope that answers your question, David.
So, I mean, it's not like, to, like, getting too, too, I'm just curious. It sounds like just a way, one form of way, but I guess I'm just wondering why a teacher wouldn't just, if they think that they need a bunch, the kids want a bunch of rakes in first grade, then don't wait for a school forum and bring it up?
Well, it was coincidental that we had a school forum, but that's just an example of a real low-level thing that can be brought up that we can give a quick answer to. And, you know, some, it is, again, it's, it comes from the teachers. We don't go in there with an agenda. We go in with the questions that they have submitted in advance or we just listen to them. And today, because Janine had, I wasn't privy to what had been brought to Janine beforehand, I had to go in there cold and just lis, listen to them and write them down and then say, "Well, this one I can answer, but this one, you know, we're going to have to talk about some more."
And when you say faculty, does that include all the...
IAs are represented and specialist teachers. Classroom teachers, specialist teachers, and instructional assistants have a rep on the forum.
Sorry, I meant, I was switching back now to the faculty meeting. Does that include, does that faculty meeting include instructional systems?
No, they, they can attend if they'd like to, but it's outside their contract, so it's strictly voluntary. You can't make them attend a faculty meeting. If they want to, they can't.
So their forum is the school board membership?
Yeah. We meet with the IAs at other times throughout the, and that's during their contract time.
Do they tend not to, typically don't attend? Scott?
There's, last year, we had a couple of IAs that wanted to attend the faculty meetings and most of them were IAs that wanted to become teachers and were either pursuing their license or, or already licensed and just wanted to be in the loop on the, because the bulk of our teach, our faculty meetings was on the teacher evaluation system. So they attended anticipating that they would become teachers and one of them did, not in our district, but in another district. So I think it paid off for them to attend.
One of the things that's changed on the elementary level is that with the change in the calendar and the lack of professional development days, faculty meetings have really become professional development. Where in the past, a faculty meeting may have combined some administrivia along with information, they, you know, they really have had to switch because we only have the Franklin County In-Service Day, unlike the high school and middle school, which have six half-days throughout the year. So it has really put some pressure on administration because of the lack of time to make sure that the faculty meetings are, are well-used to get information out.
They're an hour, so we want it to be an hour of power. And, you know, we don't want to spend time on housekeeping things and administrivia and as Marty kept, and we don't, we try not to, because it's not a good way, it's, it's not honoring their commitment to their job.
Can I ask a question about something else you just handed out?
Sure.
And I'm not sure if you have the historical knowledge about it, but it struck me that more than one in four kids in our school is choice, like 27 and a half percent.
That's correct.
And is that, which way is that trend?
Up.
It's up.
It's up. So that, that's a word, a high point then of such a figure?
And they, I, I was going to ask, just for the next meeting, if we could get a three-year trend of, you know, just whatever the date is, if we could just get the, the enrollment levels in each of those categories, just so you get a sense. If you look at the grades K-1, 2, 3, you'll see numbers like 53, 48, 56, but if you look at 4, 5, and 6, I believe you'll see numbers in the 60s and 70s. That is a demographic trend in the area and I, I particularly noticed it this year because I work in an independent school and we've always advertised, but I've never seen advertising at the public school level like I've seen it this year, heading into this year. Everyone's looking for kids. So yes, we had, we voted school choice slots and we brought in school choice students and our school choice enrollment is growing.
Who votes school choice slots?
What's that?
Who votes?
This committee does.
This committee does?
Yes, we voted in, in...
Usually in April or May.
April or May, yeah.
How many per grade level?
We vote, actually, I think we tend to vote a total for the school.
Yeah.
You assign it for the grade levels. But it's, it becomes a matter of, I mean, we, we look at things like this, or I, I was just sort of looking at it tonight thinking, I'm starting now to see in the Deerfield Elementary School, the type of impacts we're having at our school and schools throughout the valley are struggling with. And it's just a demographic trend in the state of Massachusetts as well as most of the nation. There are pockets where it's not a trend, but there's a definite lack of students. And you can see it in the Mohawk District where they're looking at closing schools and there are districts all over. The city of Chicago closed how many schools this year?
The population nationwide of school-aged children is diminishing. It's been diminishing for five or six years. I can get that in for, I mean, there's a lot of anecdotal evidence, but we can get, we can get some numbers, three-year trend or five-year trend.
What's that?
Certain regions, you mean?
By regions? Nationwide, the trend is school age. In other words, people are not having enough, the birth rate's going down and kids are not entering public schools at the same rate that they did at the high point in the 70s and 80s, and the 90s even. People are not having large families. The, you know, the average family size is that mythical 2.2. So, you know, that's a trend, demographic trend. And people are waiting also to have children and some people are opting not to have children. And that impacts us around here.
I can bring you the district perspective. One of our schools has as many as 31% of their students are school choice. And I can tell you at the high school, 7 through 12, if school choice were a town, that would be the largest sending town at Frontier. So in other words, we have the largest number of sending students are school choice. There's 128. So it does change. It changes the way a school operates. It changes the level of commitment, I think, from the sending families. It, it does have an impact.
But it is, you're right. It's, it's a number that catches your attention.
Well, kindergarten seems to have a big jump from the first grade, so maybe it's trending the other way.
We're still in the fall and fifth grade.
Sorry?
We're still in the fall and fifth grade.
Yes. You look like you are...
You think?
Taking on the load.
Bursting of the seams. That, that comes from bringing school choice students in and then having an influx of families later on.
And we keep smaller class sizes in the lower grades.
What's that?
I thought it was just grade teachers.
That, that too. Well, no, the, the reflection, the, the numbers that we're bringing up here, 25, 30, you know, one quarter, one-third of the students in, in the towns and in the district are, are opting to come in. It's a tribute to the work that you folks do as professionals and to the work that the administration does to support you and the, the towns provide the resources. The school choice money doesn't hurt either, but it enables us to continue the progress. But we are becoming increasingly reliant on it.
And, that struck me from, I'm not saying this right, if you want to hear, when we were approving school choice slots, but we do carefully determine the number of slots anticipating there will be new growth in the town, so we can somewhat manage class size.
Try to avoid the 71s.
Right.
It's I, okay?
It is. It would be, maybe this is asking too much because lots, lots going on and stuff, but it would be interesting to have somebody, maybe some, guys who, 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 education or something, to look at people who are in our elementary school in sixth grade and that are not staying in the district.
Most do.
Well, sure, most do. I just want other significant numbers that don't, and it's so...
They've been relatively low in the last couple of years. We do see...
In an eighth grade.
A drop in eighth grade to ninth.
Yeah, both of those figures, I guess, I'm looking, thinking about.
But they aren't as significant as they were 15 years ago. So we do have, depending upon the number of slots open at the tech school, that can vary from an enrollment of six to 18 who can leave at the end of eighth grade. And there are, depending upon the economy, you're going to have a larger or lesser number of kids opting to go to private school from eighth to ninth grade. It's, when we studied it at Frontier, it was fairly consistent. And from the elementary schools, we were seeing anywhere from eight to 15 kids district-wide not coming to Frontier. So, which is a fairly small number when you're looking at incoming classes of 130.
Mrs. Bear?
Yeah, I don't, given the events of the last five days, I, I do not have a written report, but I would like to bring you up to date because the events of Sunderland have impacted your faculty because I've had Ben Barshewski and Mike Ponte helping me out beginning yesterday and through next week to sort of buy me some time. It has been helpful that I, at one time was principal of Sunderland, so I was familiar with the building and the staff. So being able to kind of step in and, and support them and support Ben and Mike has, has been good. So we're working, we're working through that. One of the things that I have to do as superintendent is develop a multi-hazard evacuation plan. And this is a district-wide plan for really a large district-wide event, usually not something good. So I have to file that with the state because there has to be a very clear protocol as to who's in charge, where the command center is, where kids would be evacuated to if, in the event of a major event, how people would be contacted. So I'm meeting with the principals next week to go over, I've done a, a draft proposal. I want them to look at it and then I'll probably be bringing it to all the school committees in November, so that you'll be aware of that. And, you know, with the government shutdown, I have been getting some emails from the commissioner just trying to make people aware that some reimbursements for funding, for federal funding for the nutrition program, in one case, and the Title I program, there may be some slowdowns in how schools receive that. And it's interesting because you don't really realize the domino effect until some time has passed on. So I've been letting people know that that may, may be an impact. I also want to let you know that I'm working very slowly, I'm trying to find some expertise that doesn't cost a lot of money. I really would like to develop a better district website. So that is in the process. It's, it's a priority. It's not the highest priority, but I'm looking for it to be more interesting, more visually interesting and more effective. I'm also meeting with the principals next week to update our, we currently have the Alert Now robo-call system, but Blackboard and Connect Five have merged and purchased Alert Now that are going to give us more options for contacting families. And that includes email. It also includes the option of attendance because schools have policies of having to reach parents and notify them of things. So, so we'll get through that next week. And even though this doesn't really directly impact you, it does impact some of the conversation we've had tonight. I had a joint meeting, this was for the Frontier Regional Committee, and a joint meeting of the, all the town select boards and finance boards at Frontier a couple of weeks ago. And an offshoot of that was that two subcommittees were formed. One to explore how we're going to approach and discuss and secure funding for capital or request items. But the other one is a strategic planning meeting and they really want to look at this question of enrollment. And they want to look at, and they want to be thoughtful in this process. You know, do we continue to do school choice in the way that we have? The reimbursement for school choice students has remained constant at $5,000. What is the impact of that? What do some schools who have a third of their students who are school choice, is it cost-effective? It's not going to be a popular committee, but I also think that they are going to be asking some really hard questions and they don't want to be in the position of some of our neighboring school districts where they have really lost dramatic numbers of students and had to reduce programs and reduce staffing. The impact on that is, is very difficult, especially at the high school level, because you've, when you reduce staff, you're asking particular staff to teach more out of their course content area. And, and so I think, you know, that's, it's a brave committee and they're going to move forward. We have another meeting scheduled in November. They're going to report back with what their results are and where they stand and I'll certainly keep you informed of that. So that's what I have, unless you have any questions with me.
Did I read something within the lines of the enrollment group about regionalization?
It's, it's in the sub-context of it. Yeah, there, there is, you know, I don't know, I started here in, what, '88? And I think we've had three or four times this has surfaced. And the reason behind that, or the question behind it is, would we be better to be a pre-K through 12 system? Would we be better to be a pre-K through 6 system? What are the advantages and the disadvantages? And it's almost like every three, four years, you have new people on the committee and they ask the question. Financially, it would, it would have a very negative impact on the towns because you would have to have one system for health insurance and they're not going to choose the system that has the smallest difference. So I think, you know, they figured out a couple of years ago that the financial impact would be about $500,000. And once you bring it up, it doesn't change, but I, I think there are some towns that are going to lose financially if they do it. I've said it would be a wonderful benefit to me personally because we could reduce the number of meetings, but that really is about the only benefit because there's no state incentives. They used to have 100% transportation reimbursement, that's gone. And that changes from year to year, so. But we're asking the question.
No, I just...
We'd also necessitate a pretty dramatic reduction in staff across the towns, right? Because...
Or facilities.
It, it could.
But if you're going to realize, some of those facilities would have to be repurposed.
There's all, yeah. But I, I think it's, it's good not to just say, you know, continue with the status quo. I think it's good to ask the question and investigate and then, you know, let people draw their, their own conclusions, so.
Martin, the issue of website that you mentioned, I assume you meant for the sort of your office? You weren't talking about the schools?
No, I'm talking about the district office.
And so the question is, do all the schools have a website?
Yep.
If they do, should they perhaps be more coordinated because, or if there's a way to do that?
Well, the district...
So we're not reinventing the wheel into a place, because I know...
Right.
That here, there's discussion of improving hours, sort of going off and doing that, but I suspect other schools either, either have ones they do like or don't like, probably will all want improving. It seems like maybe it was a collective... It seems like maybe if it was a collective effort, it might be more efficient.
I think it's the funding and the level of expertise. So in other words, you'll have some people-
Once you find it.
Right, but they'll have a, a parent-
Well, that's, right.
-who volunteers their services, and they're very expensive normally, but because their child goes to that school, they'll do it. And other districts have to fend a little more for themselves. The district website does have, it has that postcard with all of the schools, that you can click on the individual schools that will take you to their websites. I understand what you're saying. We haven't done that yet, and maybe that's something we need to, you know, talk about, but-
What's driving Deerfield's, wants to redesign their website, is there's so much more content you have to have on there. Policies, for example. And now we're going to change the way we communicate with parents, and that's going to be one of the methods. And, you know, we have to build something that is going to be adaptable to changing requirements and eventually, what, you know, we envision is, building use forms could be submitted via the website, you know, cut down on that thing. Free and reduced lunch applications can be submitted via the website. I mean, all these things are down the road, but we have to do it because the pot, the way people access information about schools is changing, and that's what people expect. So we want to be ahead of the curve on that, but we have to be smart about it. We don't want to just get something with a lot of bells and whistles that doesn't do what we want it to do, which is deliver a lot of content, a lot of information about what's going on in the classrooms, ways to access the teacher, ways to, you know, find out what long-term assignments are, all those kinds of things are necessary now, because that's what people expect. And we have to be smart about it. But that's what's driving ours, it's not because we want a glitzy-looking website, it's, there's a lot of content we have to put on there, because people expect it.
I'm sure it's driving everybody's-
Yeah.
-same needs. So if there was a whiz-bang parent or a whiz-bang site on the other schools, to coordinate the efforts, I'm just thinking efficiency costs, all that stuff. If, if it's a discussion at other schools, that'd be as well.
I think it bodes discussion with the principals, because every school funds it differently. So I know at Frontier, there was a fairly generous stipend, but the expectation for a particular classroom teacher was that it was updated daily, and everything is on the website. I mean, it's 24/7 grades, you know, all the policies. And I know parents have come to use that, that's where they get their information. And I'm not sure that that, those funds are allocated in the same way to all the elementary schools.
And, and the problem with like utilizing volunteers in something like a website is if that volunteer moves away, you have this gaping, you know, need that you may not be able to fill. And then, so, you have to, you know, I think the best way is to get people to volunteer to provide content, but we need professional services to maintain the web. Like right now, Mark Nolan, our computer lab teacher, he maintains the website, and he's able to do that. He posts newsletters and things like that on there. That's simple to do. So that's stuff that we're already paying someone to do, that's part of their job duties. But professional website maintenance and design, I, I think that's usually outside the expertise that we have, that we can tap on a volunteer basis. We can't count on it, that's, that's the problem.
Is there a local district tech person? Can I read, is there a new hire?
There is a tech director, but that's main, really to maintain the systems and the operations. It wouldn't be somebody who would be in the nitty-gritty of websites. He could help in the development of them, in the format. But I think probably what needs to happen is, at least on the principal level, we have to identify what our funding sources are, and maybe we need to have more consistency in the schools, and a more clear job description for the person who does it. To do it well, you need to have somebody who has time that they can commit, if not every day, every other day, especially if you're, you know, I know at the middle high school, all the forms are online. And, but, you know, in order to do that, every time they're updated, you need somebody who's capable of doing it. So we'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll talk about it as administrators and see if we can't get some more consistency.
So, you know, in recent years, the high schools developed a pretty robust media arts program. They're with us tonight, and I've seen it grow, even though in my time of school committee. It seems like there's an opportunity to begin not only training kind of the future web designers that we will need, but also to create some opportunities that might be duplicated at the tech schools and keep some kids in district instead of sending them away.
Mm-hmm, yeah, good idea.
Any other questions, Ms. Barrett? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. Anyone cares to make it?
To adjourn?
To adjourn?
Not to go to executive session.
No, no executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? We wore them out. All those in favor?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.